We're about to begin shortly. Can we ready? Dear honourable guests, ladies and gentlemen here today. Thank you for joining us in the auditorium physically and virtually. And currently, we have Christopher, Mr Christopher, Mr Haji Azizi, Miss Norani and Miss Soraya on the line. And we would like to invite Datut Sri Maimuna, Binti Momat Sharif, UN ED, to deliver an opening remarks for today. Please be invited.
Hello, panelists. Assurances, honourable ministers, honourable state executive councillor, honourable mayors, honourable panelists who are online, all my friends there. Friends, ladies and gentlemen, a very good afternoon, very good morning, very good evening to all of you, whenever you are in this world. When we started the year 2020, this decade of actions on the SDGs, little did we know what we would soon be battling with. A global challenge that threatens to push back the progress made over the past few years. As countries take action again to contain the spread of COVID-19, the world has been launched into an unprecedented economic and social crisis. In Malaysia alone, more than seven million people, around 20% of the population are foreseen to be severely affected by the social economic impact stemming from the pandemic. COVID-19 is exposing and exacerbating deep rooted structural fragilities and spatial inequalities in our cities and communities. The pandemic is having this proportional impact on the most vulnerable who are unable to protect themselves against the virus because of where they live. We are all now convinced that adequate housing is the utmost important. All people need adequate housing to stay at home. COVID-19 exposes more than one billion people living in slums or in inadequate housing. The urban poor often has no access to social safety nets, leaving them at risk of eviction or having their services disconnected as their incomes drop. The longer the pandemic goes on, the deeper there is being pushed into extreme poverty, precarious living condition and insecurity. Short term measures such as access to safe shelter and moratorium on eviction are very essential. However, fundamental policy shift and sustained investment in adequate and affordable housing are needed in a longer term. COVID-19 crisis has shown that housing is the cornerstone of people's health, dignity, safety, inclusion and wellbeing. Housing is now, more than ever, a matter of life and death. Housing a home is central to providing shelter and access to quality sanitation and water supplies. It is key to assess public spaces, job opportunities, hospitals, schools and food. It is also the first line of defence against extreme events. In short, housing is a precondition for the enjoyment of most fundamental human rights. The COVID-19 crisis has therefore stressed the urgency of treating housing not just as a commodity, but as a fundamental right to ensure a safe place to live in peace and dignity. COVID-19 emergency response has also shown that housing is a right that can be realised when it is put at the centre of political agenda through cooperation, collaboration and coordination between all stakeholders. UN Habitat has issued a global statement and guidance on housing for all, which can be downloaded from our website. We continue to advocate for basic urban services in slums and informal settlements. I am proud to say that the Malaysian government is a global example for such provision of its settingan or informal settlements here. Of course, a lot of more to add. A systematic process of lifting the economic status of our communities living in informality in Malaysia is regarded as a model to follow up in the developing world. In this crucial moment, we need to join forces and acknowledge that we are share responsibilities. We all share responsibilities in realising the right to adequate housing for all and leaving no one and no place behind. A shared and collective response is necessary to address housing challenges. All actors need to be involved with a clear role and clear commitments. We need to agree that providing adequate housing is a shared responsibility among the below stakeholders. Number one, national government should support local decision makers with solid policy framework. Local authorities must ensure that all citizens can access adequate housing. Number three, civil society organisations can contribute to build partnership with residents and the private sector needs to mobilise resources and implementing option. And the fifth research institute should build sound evidence on wish to base policies responses. And last but not least, the international community could mobilise support for sustainable cities, promote and protect the right to adequate housing. For this reason, I am pleased to see on the panel representative from state and local government and the private sector and research institute in a truly collaborative spirit. It is especially crucial for government to follow the lead of the current innovators and champions and put it in place mechanism to protect those most vulnerable to the current emergency. For this reason, in short term, UN Habitat encourages local governments to at a minimum adopt following emergency measures. Number one, provide temporary and emergency accommodation to all people without secure housing to enable them to practise social distancing and necessary health related measures by leveraging the use of underutilised spaces and repurposing of buildings for an increased supply of shelter and other appropriate measures. Number two, put in place emergency safe drinking water and hand washing facilities in key location in informal settlement and slum by providing water tanks, stand pipes, hand washing facilities and city sanitizers along with hygiene messages and social distancing instructions. Number three, take extraordinary measures to secure the right to housing for all. Inter alia true moratorium on eviction due to rental and mortgage areas, deferral of mortgage payment, extension of winter moratorium on forced eviction of informal settlement and slum, introduction of rental stabilisation or reduction measures and suspension of utility costs and surcharges for duration of the pandemic. Explore option for a vulnerable communities or neighbourhood to assess repurpose building, land and open space for essential small businesses, food security, emergency healthcare and other vital function needed while people stay at home. Malaysia has the opportunity to demonstrate that it is possible to provide adequate housing for all by fostering the overall collaboration and coordination among all stakeholders to improve the sustainability of the housing sector. In the decade of action, we must reach a new milestone in reducing inequalities and poverty levels and progressively delivering the universal human right everywhere. We need to agree that safe and adequate housing is both a preventive and cure for the pandemic. In fact, adequate housing is now a matter of life and death. This common understanding can help us address the housing challenges in cities and human settlements and reach an important target of SDG 11. I wish all of you a fruitful discussion and encourage you to take part in the Housing for All campaign that will be launched up the upcoming World Habitat Day, which is on the 5th of October, to promote key action and housing solution. October is a Ben October. It will start with the World Habitat Day on the 5th of October. And this year will be in Surabaya. And the World Cities Day will be in Nairobi, Nakuru. And in Malaysia, will be hosted by our friend from Subang Jaya. Thank you very much and I hope that you get a very, very positive action plan. Now, we have to go beyond dialogue. We have to go to the action oriented. Thank you very much. Terima kasih.
Give honourable applause to Yama Bahagia Datut Sri Maimuna Binti Momat Sharif. And now I'm handing over to Mr Christopher Lalandi from UN Habitat. He's the Senior Housing Specialist from UN Habitat. Hand over to you, Mr Christopher.
Thank you very much and thank you very much for hosting us, although like virtually. We are very, very happy to join. I think that this is like a very new type of platform for all of us, but we are adjusting really well. So I'm very happy to be able like to join your event in the Malaysia Urban Forum. And I mean, a big welcome to all, to our special session on affordable housing for inclusive communities. And thank you very much to our Executive Director at UN Habitat, Madame Maimuna Sharif, for your welcoming remarks and introduction. I think that this is resonating not only with our mandate, but with like the targets and the mission that many national governments and local governments are facing, especially in this very difficult period, like challenging and battling with the virus. I also want to acknowledge like the partnership we have with UNSCAP, the Economic Commission in Asia Pacific from the UN. And my colleague Omar Siddiq in particular, who will like deliver a closing remark at the end of this session. So this specialist session is organised in close partnership with ESCAP, but also with the Ministry of Housing and Local Governments in Malaysia. And a word of thanks to Mrs Azura Dha Kamudin for the great support of the ministry, but also like for all the great support of like counterparts in Malaysia in the different states. So without further ado, and before like introducing like all the speakers, we will move back to the different questions. Yes, indeed, housing is like a major, a key element for social inclusion in all countries and cities for people. And it's really more than the right. It's really like an opportunity for economic growth and like equality for all people in cities. So we see at UN Habitat the central role of housing for social and economic development. And I hope that this session will hopefully like lead us to add more discussion on this topic. It is indeed also a shared responsibility. It's not only like the responsibility of the public domain of national governments or local governments to implement the right to adequate housing or to formulate housing policy. This need to be like fully done in partnership with the partners from the private sector, with communities and the research and academia. So it is a shared responsibility in the way that we want to implement this fantastic objective of the right to adequate housing jointly with all partners. UN Habitat has quite some history working in partnership with Malaysia. We have been implementing in particular a joint project in the framework of the UN Development Account Project on the Global Housing Programme. Malaysia is one of the four countries in which we have been engaging since two years. So together with Bulgaria in Europe, in the European Union, Paraguay in Latin America, but also Angola for the African region. And we have been like extremely pleased, has been like very interesting to engage with all, to learn from the Malaysian experience, to be able also to share the best practice and the knowledge with like cities around the world and governments around the world, but also in the region. So we hope that this discussion could also like lead to more thinking in this project that we are also implementing in partnership with ESCAP. As part of this joint project, we've also been developing this year a joint paper with Think City as housing as a response to the COVID crisis. So it will be also interesting perhaps to react on this paper and to have more discussion. Before we start the discussion, but also our Executive Director, Madame Sharif already introduced, but very important for us to also advertise the World Habitat Day coming on the 5th of October. This year, it's focusing on housing for all. So a crucial also milestone for us to really share our key message and like the work that Habitat is doing globally to promote and protect the right to adequate housing. And also like I want, I'm very proud to announce the launch of a new campaign on housing, housing for all, that will also be presented on the 5th of October in the event in Surabaya. So without further ado, I will introduce the very distinguished panel that we have today. We are very thankful to all for your contributions. And a big thank you to all for joining the discussion online. So first of all, I mean, I would like to acknowledge the presence of Mr Ayub Jamil, which is actually, I understand, not in the room and perhaps will not be able to join us, but this is like an event that we have been discussing with the draw state for some time. So I thought it was also important to mention. Mrs Norani Roslan, the Mayor of Subang Jaya. I mean, warm welcome, madam. Thank you very much for joining the discussion. Mr Nurad Zizi Mukta, Executive Director of Planning and Deputy Mayor for Kuala Lumpur. Good afternoon, sir. Very nice to see you today. Dr Soraya Ismail, Director of Research at the Kazana Research Institute. Welcome. Dr Andan Abdul Majid, the Managing Director of Think City, with whom we have been working closely over the past months. And this is it. So I'm going to start with like the first questions that is addressed to all. And please feel free to take the floor, to raise your hand. I will ask like the panelists to go beyond two to three minutes in turn. We have a few questions to share in this panel. And also, you know, I would like to start to ask the audience to start preparing their questions also, perhaps also in writing in the chat. So we can also benefit from this opportunity to anticipate and to have like the most interactive session as possible online. So distinguished panelists, delegates, COVID-19 has led to disruption in regional supply chains for construction and housing. I would like to know from your experience, which lessons have we learned from this crisis? And how can we use transition to more resilient and localised housing solution? So I will be very interested to hear from some of you. I cannot see like all of you, all of you like directly, but please like raise your hand. Madame Noradi Roslan, perhaps you would like to start? The floor is yours.
Thank you, Kristoff. Assalamualaikum warahmatullahi wabarakatuh and good afternoon, everybody. Aftermath of COVID has affected all sectors of economy in Malaysia. And what constructive efforts have experienced is human. Have any, well, before that, we have seen that all production have been stopped. Actually, and I mean, in reality, before, now comes to the six months already. But does affect the supply and of housing. We are talking about policies and also the apply from the market side. Government policy affect a lot of the quality of the housing in the country. At federal level, certain policy for housing, they also have. We at the local government are implement that see for ourselves how the policies implementation being done on the ground. Since of it, the construction have to stop. And the foreign, our dependency on foreigners are so much affecting our commercial industry. Can be the problem of apply affect the market. But is it the market that we are talking about today? About the whole housing or overall market in general? Can we in Malaysia still afford affordable housing without the half of workers? If we look in the data, the department says that we. The income level is called at them, maybe twenty, okay? Has an income of five thousand two hundred and twenty eight thousand a month. The affordable house costing a hundred and eighty eight thousand. But redam may be a different thing. And we all aware various of the of the housing facing today. For example, land shortage financing to the developers and. The bureaucracy and the default approval, the number of need and. Issues that we are facing as the supply question. Does doing need a change policy at the government, at the local? Now, the federal is saying that the rumah mampu mili or the affordable. Three hundred and fifty thousand with a small space down. In this land, four of affordable houses ranging from those things at four thousand ringgit at the size of six hundred and fifty thousand until the one ranging to two hundred and fifty thousand for a thousand square feet of house. But the actual affordability of the people have never really been measured. As if it is, if it needs to be fitted into the local area itself. For example, Subang Jaya may have a different company. People in other states, within Subang Jaya, there may be different, different small facilities within that area. And so far, we do not have an actual data saying that the income gap that needs to be tailored according to individual need in the individual area. So maybe that that is one area that we need to. This are the problem of the quality of life. Before this, in the eighties, we have a year is setting high the cost of it. For example, we have lots and lots of cost of payments that does not happen at the same time. But recently, we have had to mix the type with the area. Cost of houses within the same area so that the people that normally lives in an environment that is not so appealing to them can have, the children that normally lives in the local houses can have better role model when they leave. Income and how Subang Jaya tackle the problem within the. We have a program of exploring and improving. Need to be put together so that we have a solid policy and a good implementation. That will be all from me.
Thank you very much, Madame Norani Roslan. There is a little challenge perhaps with the sound system. So just like to, if it continues, I will, I will tell you, you know, I will raise my hand. Madame Soraya Ismail, you want to intervene briefly on this question? Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Kristoff, and thank you, UN Habitat, for inviting Kazana Research Institute to give our input for this very important topic for housing for all. I'd like to put my discussion into two parts. One is basically the overriding principle that I think we should look into before we then go into the adverse effects of COVID-19, specifically for the urban poor and the creation of more slums, we hope not. So first of all, I'd like to, well, share my views on some of the housing policies being, you know, here and overseas. They attempt to overcome the problems of severe housing shortages and unaffordability created by prevailing market conditions. Meaning, we are talking about very local condition. But we are also talking about the underlying assumptions of behaviour. I'd like the fact Kristoff mentioned just now that we need an all of government approach, all of community approach to ensure that we get proper affordable housing for all strata of society. But we also need, I think, two more sectors here, which is people who own houses and people who speculate. These are the people who drive out house prices. Secondly, also the financialisation of houses whereby there are so many innovative microprudential measures created by the banking sector. And therefore, houses that shouldn't be affordable is deemed to be affordable just because mortgages makes it affordable. So these are an all encompassing approach that we should also look into and zoom into when we want to ensure that houses remain affordable and of decent quality. The other thing that I wanted to bring forward is that this issue about decent quality and adequate housing. Many things that we try to remains a challenge is that we have, on one hand, the most valuable asset in most countries are housing. However, or due to that, the provision of good quality housing, good standards with decent prices and rents still remains one of the main challenges for government. So I think the main guiding principle is to move away from policies that view providing shelter or the right to housing as a drain to government coffers, but more as well as a broader agenda of guiding and managing the housing sector comprehensively. This means that in order to do really precision and non palliative types of intervention, we must actually understand the lay of the land. And I think some of the issues facing most countries, especially developing countries, is that we don't really know what type of houses, formal and informal, that is available for maybe ten, the bottom 20% of society and what number of houses are available for the top 20% of society. So for example, I give an example of Pakistan. Only 1% of formal housing is, you know, for the consumption of 63% of the general population, the bottom population, 63% and below. So now, this is when I think KRI is thinking that you, one might see that government should not intervene, let the market prevail. But when clearly the market is not achieving shelter to all, clearly we have to regulate certain incidences of abuse of oligopolistic or monopolistic way of doing things. So this then begs the question of how do we ensure? So this then begs the question of how do we ensure decent, good quality housing? Is there a price that is also decent for a certain type of income strata? Two ways of doing this, I'm sure all of you would have done this as well. One is you you we believe that the private uh the public sector, the government should provide like the mayor just now in. See the PPR housing, um because we assume, we assume that the private sector cannot give this sort of housing. Uh to people um without ma- uh cost subsidization. Secondly, which is what is happening in India and Pakistan is that we then provide amenities or services to uh slum agreement. A grading of slums. All have their um pros and cons, however, um the most important thing, I think, for KRI is to ensure that whatever intervention we do. Of course, there's a balance, there's a trade-off, but we keep on monitoring on how we then achieve positive living environment. Because some of the time, and this for all countries, I think, we we tend to look at the numbers as a key KPI. For ensuring that, okay, we've got shelter for two hundred people and that is sufficient. But we also need to have KPI for positive living environment. Are housing just something for you to have shelter, but it's also about human settlement, it's also about social mobility. Now, if we just give housing that is creating more slums or is even less quality than what they have previously. Um I I think more has to be looked into decent quality housing. Now, if I uh use two minutes about the current COVID and what's happening in Malaysia. Um we had, we did a study of about four thousand household respondents in a PPR in. What we call social housing in Malaysia. Social housing in Malaysia does something, there's ownership and renting. Now, for social housing renting, um the density is very high. Now, one might see, one might see that um when density is high is because, you know, we want to ensure they live in the core. Um they are transient workers and therefore they need to ensure that their livelihood is not emasculated. When you then put them in the period open, so you have to put them in a central area with high density. What COVID then um further suggests is that with high density, you must have fantastic. Uh maintenance and many lifts, so. The problem with some of our financing of PPRs is that the federal government gives a capital invest, capital investment for these buildings. And yet our municipal council mayors have to cough up the maintenance of these areas. So this is in economic terms, is a is a disalignment of incentives. If the project mission of PPR is ensure is low-cost maintenance, but with high quality capital cost. Therefore, we will see a different outcome than what we see now, where it's very difficult to maintain. Vans PPR, the current ones, with um very low um types of facilities. Um so I think um the one is to ensure that we understand the project mission. Of social housing and then ensuring that there is a balancing of finance. Between the federal government and the local council so that it becomes sustainable. And secondly, with the COVID nineteen, um overcrowding and spaces must be high. There are certain PPR that house a family of four, there is only five hundred and thirty-five square feet. Clearly, um during the lockdown, this has caused a lot of mental distress. So this is the time for us, I think in all countries as well, for us to really look into. How do we ma- and maintain and ensure decent living standards in all shelter is maintained? And of course, who should put their money in for this maintenance? I I think that's for now, Christophe. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much, Madame Soraya Smail, I mean for for this perspective from Kazana. Uh thank you, I very much agree on on many points. Um however, like from the the experience from uh the mayor of Subang Yaya. Uh unlike the efforts to provide affordable housing um at the local level. Uh I'm I'm very curious to to hear from Kuala Lumpur and sir, um I'm sure that. Perhaps you would like to share like some experiences or events from this crisis. I give you the floor, thank you.
Thank you, Christopher. Uh thank you firstly for inviting us, City of Kuala Lumpur, to be part of this forum. Assalamualaikum warahmatullahi wabarakatuh. Good afternoon or good morning for wherever you are. Uh as mentioned by our two earlier uh panel speakers. Uh uh COVID nineteen has uh. Showed to us that the need for us to improve the quality of our. Affordable homes. Uh I think for the past uh few decades, we are dealing with the issue of quality. Uh I think we we have enough numbers now and we should now focus more of uh quality affordable homes. Uh as as shared by uh our young Ahmad Bahamad Prime Minister in his speech. Uh this morning where uh he related that uh he have visited uh PPR. Uh uh Rajang, where he found that. Uh we don't have enough community facilities that could cater for uh the people. Uh knowing that the size of uh the housing units is not conducive enough. So if we have enough community facilities in the form of uh. Uh libraries or reading areas or you name it what of for the childrens. Uh that they can use it for uh. As a mean for them to be uh to facilitate their uh schools from home. Uh those people from the uh upper bracket would have, would have enough uh bandwidth uh within their personal house. But for those childrens in uh our PPR would have a lot of difficulties. To to be able. To be. Conducting uh their education from home. So I think that is one of the major issues that can learn from uh this pandemic, Christopher.
Thank you very much, uh Mister Nuretizi, for for this insight and I very much agree with you like. The impact on specific like social groups and particularly the youth. Um has been like particularly um challenging and I think that it requires like very uh specific responses. Uh this is also something that we have been identifying in our, in our work with uh with Thingcity uh some some weeks ago. And talking about Thingcity, I mean, I cannot see uh Dr. Ardan Abdul Majid, Managing Director of Thingcity on the screen because I know he's in the room. But if Dr. Ardan would like to um intervene, I mean, I also give him the floor. I see from far a hand raising, I guess it's his hand.
Uh thank you, Christophe, thank you, fellow panelists. Uh probably I will take this occasion to uh while we have been talking a lot about building. Well, the uh the context of building new affordable homes, I thought we will also give equal focus to. In the regeneration of Malaysia's low-cost housing estates. Malaysia's efforts to house its urban poor has been a remarkable success, I think, as has been said. There are nearly six hundred thousand families living in some form of government subsidized or initiated low-cost housing schemes today. That have improved their livelihoods. However, in many cases, the design of apartments, layouts, social issues, community capacities. Management structure, poor maintenance and leadership has led to declining living conditions and other socioeconomic problems. If not addressed with the same urgency as earlier zero-squatter tolerance government policies, there is a real risk. That many low-cost housing estates will become vertical slums in the very near future. In the last two decades, despite the urban population increasing from fourteen to twenty-four million. The number of people living in squatter settlements in Malaysia has declined from over five hundred thousand to less than fifty thousand today. These impressive statistics are a product of co- of the commitment of successive governments even prior to independence. To build and subsidize high-rise flats and apartments for lower-income urban families. It is now estimated that over three million Malaysians or ten percent of the total population live in some form of government-initiated housing schemes. In the Klang Valley, this number is estimated at twenty-five percent or one in four citizens. The schemes have undoubtedly improved the livelihoods of generation of Malaysian families. Access to running water, stable electricity, reduce vulnerability to extreme weather events, particularly flooding. Physical safety, security of tenure, access to community amenities and improved access to job opportunities. Are examples of multitude of benefits Malaysia's low-cost housing schemes have delivered. However, the policy to rehouse quarters into strata high-rise units has had several unintended consequences. The first major issue that needs addressing is that some of the nation's earlier housing schemes are still occupied. This means that many families are living in apartment and flat complexes that are more than fifty years old. With outdated and possibly unsafe plumbing, wiring or guardrails. There are also unintended consequences related to the thirty percent low-cost housing quota imposed on private developers. Losses incurred in providing this housing scheme is then defrayed by increasing. The prices of other sellable units meant for the regular market. This increase leads to a situation whereby the middle-income Malaysians are priced out. The third issue is that many low-cost house, low-cost high-rise strata schemes are at a risk of becoming future slums. First, while they have housed Malaysia's urban poor, they have not necessarily led to upward social mobility. Studies show that a high proportion of PPR residents are dissatisfied with the level of basic maintenance. From lifts to rubbish collection. This is symptomatic of a myriad of underlying issues, which according to the World Bank includes poor design. Breakdown of common infrastructure, a deterioration in hygiene and sanitation. Petty crime, public safety, financial stress and a failure in government delivery. These issues are amplified by lack of trust, lack of sense of community and poor local governance resulting in lack. Of community capacity to improve their situation. The twenty eighteen National Community Policy thus recognized many of the issues outlined above. Especially the need to involve community in the management of common property. However, a more holistic approach is required that realigns the institutional setting. What is required is not only an injection of funds to improve the quality and infrastructure, but investment in a system. To enhance the capacities and resilience of communities and crucially, a system of accountability for service delivery. How these funds are allocated and spent is critical, as too often, the current structure allows the elite capture and inefficiencies. Digital technologies, especially during the COVID nineteen pandemic, will be particularly essential to meet these goals. Over the past six months, Thingcity has been experimenting with with a digital delivery platform with a slang state government to deliver food aid. To the community through a platform known as Kita to Kita or K two K. The system has a facial recognition function for identification, verification and is structured as a platform for two-way information flow. It is also geared to allow service add-ons including educational content, payment systems and complaints. Our proposal is to use this platform alongside urban regeneration techniques to catalyze the rollout. Of a national program designed to revitalize housing estates in need by pulling together technical experts with community. Improve service delivery to the most vulnerable and institutional change from the bottom up. We believe that it is paramount that government invest in the regeneration of low-cost housing in Malaysia. Thingcity is focused on this and we call upon interested stakeholders to work together with us on our proposal to achieve this goal. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Dr. Ardan, for your for your contribution. I think that with this first question, unlike already like the contribution from all of you, we're having like a very comprehensive. Um background, like a sort of panorama of the challenges. And if I can like summarize, I think that there are many challenges that are inherent to the housing sector even globally. This is not like something only like targeting Malaysia. But we also see like a a number of opportunities that this crisis is creating. And for the housing sector like to really like bring solutions. And this is also in this period that I'm moving to the second question, which is focusing on the role of local government. And I will turn to uh Ms. Norene and Ms. Raya on that. And I mean, I would like to ask you, you know, usually we have seen like housing development solution. Uh especially like large-scale programs are typically managed at national level. However, we have seen that like local governments have a very important role in the management and maintenance. This is also something that some of you mentioned in the previous question uh at local level. And I mean, I really would like to hear from you, what are the priority policies? That local authorities can take to design and implement affordable housing solutions. So from your experience or from your research findings. Thank you very much. Madame Norene, please, Madame Mayor.
In Subang Jaya, we have hundred and twenty-two local housing projects with no less than thirty thousand units of houses. And the majority of these local houses do not have the ability to form their own management corporation. And um the joint management body before that. So the local authority, as the commissioner of building, have to ensure that um first um these people do their. Miss to elect their joint management bodies so that a group of people will oversee the maintenance of the building. Uh but even if uh there are a group of people who are willing to. Take the responsibility of ensuring the management is done. Uh the majority of the uh local projects, um the tenants there. Either do not have the ability to pay for the management fees or do not have the discipline to do. So the joint management body are saddled with problems of non-payment and therefore. Uh not having enough money to manage their own um um area or set uh. Put it, it's um most. Local government. And um. Adderments come in and. Uh. Was how uh the. For Malaysia. We all come there. Thousand eighteen. Team uh a sound project. Now. In the rock and recurring among uh. Each of them would take care of the overall area other than their lot. So we. The um. Again. Nice. Generation. To. And to together to prioritize what the the area uh. I can send off. The we will for a desire the what to. Me and the logic. To care of the area. After the. Yeah, I. When we. Them together, we. Getting. It. So. Cohesiveness will show result when the environment around us is much better. They because uh that's a lot. And we come in. The vision with it is with NGO. The. That they are. Uh they are. Of the um of their. And music uh like. Been through what they do um um. But. And one. Invited to do it their own. But if we did it, and one of the challenges, they needed to do it their own. In two thousand eighteen, I ended the project from project to project. Not all of them become very successful, but I would say at least half of from their own joint management body. And with the role of commissioner of building, if they cannot have the minimum to the fee, then we want and like the to enable or or the oh, yes, local authority is, let's see, what can hand really uh, what are the amount is supposed to make a couple, but it's not the with the area thing. So after we came in, with help of the government, have repeated the um, facility of a need to them on how to maintain the environment. They wanted to contribute to the cooperation. After that, we found that from the before project that we ran, there are a lot of improvements within the community. We put them, we lead them, so what can be done for example, I believe with a can be repeated in a low-cost areas. And the policies for the priority of low-cost houses and foremost that we do not all those houses that creates slums area to change this policy into a low medium cost and to try this specialization of place that cannot go to buy or to be able to be put into a medium cost. So in the environment, that's in
Thank you. Thank you very much, Madam Roslan. Thank you. I mean, yes, beyond the role of local government, I can also see like the importance of like engaging with community, which was one of your your key points. Madame Ismail, please.
Thank you. Thank you, Kristoff. Before I answer on the role of the government of the provision of housing, just, just, just a little bit of some overarching principles of why, how, why I'm going to approach it that way. So we have many measures of housing affordability. That's how we measure the efficacy of the housing sector. I, I, I'm, I don't think we can just do proper policies without looking at the efficacy of the total housing sector efficaciousness. So for affordability, we want to make housing affordably, sorry, housing generally affordable to more people rather than less. And that might also mean the middle forty of the country, any country. So we have, as all the housing specialists in this auditorium would know, so, so bear with me just a bit, so that we have the median multiple, we have the housing hospital and also residual income. So that's on the demand side. Now for on the supply side, so because I'm bringing it to why government sometimes should or should not go into the provision of shelter. We have an indicator called the down-market penetration, which was developed by UN and World Bank. Focuses, it focuses on the affordability of the lowest-priced new house provided by the private housing development sector without subsidies from the government. The indicator is suited in the filtering model of housing consumption in which low-income households are generally restricted to informal housing or filtered down older former sector housing. The down-market penetration ratio captures the fact that in some formal housing markets, the private sector generally supplies housing for high-income groups, but does not market to the low-income consumers. While in other housing markets, I might say the good and the bad, right? And other housing markets, private sectors are willing and able to produce housing affordable to lower-income households with or no or no or little public incentive subsidies or other assistance. In general, the down-market penetration ra- ratio is compared with just now, we use median multiple with the median multiple to indicate the extent to which the market supplies to below median income household. So then we did another study on all states in Malaysia. Now, some government-assisted housing program has reached up until the ninety days, I mean ninety percent of housing in Malaysia in that state is being provided with government assistance. This is not right. So when government go in and, and, and give this sort of assistance up to ninety percent, normally in most countries fifteen or twenty percent, and therefore we are buffering the private sector's inefficiency. And therefore they can then concentrate for just the top twenty, which is not what we want for a proper, efficient, responsive housing market. And I, I totally disagree that when you have the quota for thirty percent, it then makes the middle forty not accessible for the private market. We have not seen this incidence. This is just, you know, hearsay, but the data seems to suggest that the down-market penetration ratio was good and behaving well until, until the government, federal government made in well-meaning intention to provide good decent housing for up to ninety percent of a population in a state or in a metropolitan, depending on your working definition of what an area ought to be. Now, when you have such a big national housing program, it makes all the rest of the private sector development, well, let's just supply for the top end. So, so this is something that we should not, we should not support. We believe that in order to make good policies, we must look at the down-market penetration ratio, understand the cost items that's there as well as understand the political issues that's at stake here. Because of course, this is, housing is not just about market efficiency, it's also highly political. Thank you, Kristoff.
Thank you very much, Madame Soraya. This was a very clear point and I think we take it also for the Q and A. I'm also like turning to our, to our like friends and, and participants online. There is a chat, please feel free to ask your question for the Q and A session. I already like see like a few of them. And now, I mean, I'm turning it to Mr, Mr Azizi from Kuala Lumpur, I'd like to Mr Hamdan for the following question, and this is like about like spatial planning. And how in your view can existing spatial planning approaches evolve to be more rights-minded? And how they can help to ensure more equitable access to rights and particularly on the right to adequate housing? So, so Mr Noor Azizi, I mean, I, I turn to you. I'm sure that you have very insightful examples on that.
Okay, thank you, Christopher. But I would like to share with the participant with regard to the second question just now.
Please, please, please do so. Yes, yes, sorry.
I think you are right in the sense that as saying, housing development in Southeast Asia, Malaysia for example, is often a nationally, nationally-led initiative. In our case, the Ministry of Housing Local Government provide affordable homes or the PPR known to us, which later managed by local authority. In our case, City Hall Kuala Lumpur. Currently, City Hall Kuala Lumpur is managing about ten thousand units of our own and another thirty-three thousand units of PPR, which was provided by the Ministry of Housing and Local Government. You're asking what are the policies, measures that we have formulated with regard to providing affordable homes? Towards this end, I think City Hall Kuala Lumpur, under the Ministry of Federal Territory, have implemented policies that encourage private developers to provide more affordable homes for the people of Kuala Lumpur. I would like to share some figures. I don't know whether this is a success story or one of these policies. In the last two years, since June twenty eighteen, City of Kuala Lumpur have approved seventy-five projects consisting of about forty-seven thousand units of affordable homes, i.e. units known here as residency wilayah. Those unit with selling price below three hundred thousand, some says is not, is not affordable. Out of which, seven thousand units are already completed and now twenty-seven thousand unit are still under construction. As a way forward, City of Kuala Lumpur, with the Ministry of Federal Territory, are now striving to provide additional eighty thousand units of affordable homes in the next ten years through private developers. As an improvement to the previous program, the next, the focus for the next ten years would be to provide more affordable homes known as residency prihatin for the B forty population. This time around, the units will be priced below two, below two hundred thousand Malaysian ringgit compared to the earlier residency wilayah, which is priced at three hundred thousand unit. As we know, there, there is always a group of people in the city that could not even afford to own the affordable homes. So towards meeting this, the need for this group, City of Kuala Lumpur plans to build what we term it as council home. Units to be rented to the young couples, to the youth group so that they can stay temporarily before they themselves can own their own house. As our mayor, Datuk Norhisam, announced last week, the first council home to be developed by City Hall ourselves will be on our own land near Taman Danau Desa, which we plan for a scheme with one thousand unit. Insha Allah, next year, by next year, we'll start the construction of this council homes. In supporting this program, one of our major contribution as local authority is to continue to provide incentive in term of providing higher intensity. I think Dr Soraya has, has mentioned something on the flaws of higher intensity on her earlier comments. We, we even allow up to a thousand acre, a thousand percent per acre. That is, if the, if the developer can provide a hundred percent affordable home schemes. But if the developer provide fifty percent, we reduce the, the intensity to six hundred percent per acre accordingly. Having said that, that is still subject to the developer fulfilling all the other technical requirement. Meaning to say that the one thousand percent per acre is not a blank, a blank check that, that the mayor willing to, to give to the, to the developer. On top of that also, we do provide exemption on development charges for affordable homes that will reduce the burden on the developers. So there is my, my, my comment on the, on the second questions. So on, on the third question with regard to spatial planning approaches, I think I would conquer with Mr Hamdan's points just now. Especially for Kuala Lumpur, presently about eighty-seven to ninety percent of our land are fully developed. So there not much land left for us to, to, to build affordable homes. So the way forward to us is obviously redevelopment of our old schemes, our old schemes. And in fact, the, the ministry has identified various sites that have potential to be, to be redeveloped and the ministry has started to engage with private developers that have shown interest in developing this area. So for Kuala Lumpur, I think that will be the future plan for us in providing affordable home, which lies on the redevelopment of our present public housing. Just thank you. Back to you, Christopher.
Thank you very much, Mr Azizi, for, for this insights. I'm turning to, to Mr Hamdan in, in the room. If he wants to, to react on this question related to spatial planning. Yeah, we are mastering more and more this type of semi-virtual conferences.
Kristoff, I think they, what they call, I take note of the, the feedback from the comments the speakers have made. The, the challenge, I think, in urban, in particularly in what you call highly urbanized environment that we are living in like Klang Valley, Penang and JB, land is a scarce resource. And the challenge then lies the utilization of land in an effective manner such that what do you call, it will help to house as many people as possible. But we should not forget that, that there is a certain point of diminishing marginal returns that will come into play, whether it's in terms of intensity of development, whether in terms of availability of public spaces, places that have lack of public spaces with high intensity will mean that, that you will have eventually declining quality of life. So spatial planning and, and housing needs to be considered in the context of what kind of livability that eventually we are going to provide. I think at the beginning, there was this conversation around quality of homes. Why we need to deal with the quantity? Quality of homes is the biggest challenge that we have to deal with. Are we just building houses, homes or communities? I think earlier, our mayor from Subang Jaya said, one of the big challenges that she faces is the issue of communities and how can you then create such that schemes that will eventually build communities? Now, Malaysia as a, as a nation has always been a very, what I call the idea of a village, the spirit of a village is deeply rooted. Now, how can such ideas of, of spirits of village, of community can be brought into a center stage? So as we look at in terms of the future land development as well as regeneration, we would want to encourage a bigger focus around the factor of the quality of place, livability and sustainability. And we also want to look into in terms of up, up, up to social mobility. So if we are building housing schemes, we need to consider the lessons and observations that we are making in the current housing schemes. In many other housing schemes today, we see major issues of hygiene, problems of even to some extent, recent research indicate that some health indications, some health indications of stunting or diseases that were not, that were eradicated are reappearing in some of our PPRs. So I, I, I believe there's a lot to learn in building back better. Otherwise, we will end up building higher-dense urban slums, vertical slums for the future that eventually becomes time bombs, that eventually will, this what they call, create some form of dislocation in society. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Hamdan, and thank you very much, Mr Noor Azizi, for this perspective. From your own experience, I think that we very much agree on this point. And that's why also that we are promoting a rights-based approach to public policies, but also to housing development. We think it's key. From this discussion, before I give like the, the floor to my colleague Omar Siddiq from ESCAP for the Q and A session, I think I really retain a few, a few ideas like the importance of quality. This is something that all of you have raised, like not This is something that all of you have raised, like not only about the number of houses being produced, but really like the importance of not creating future ghettos or future slums. I think that this is like really important with like a human-based approach to it. But also like what Hamdan said, I think that is also like totally in line with Habitat's key message. Like we are not building houses, we are building homes and we are building housing for building cities and for building communities. And this is really like the translation of like the promotion of the right to adequate housing in cities. So I'm very thankful to all of you for your, your insights. It's really a pleasure to, to see some of you again or to meet some of you for the first time. We are very pleased for this event and since we have this ongoing project in Malaysia, I also look forward to continue discussion with you on specific aspects of your work on housing. I'm giving the floor to my colleague Omar from ESCAP for the Q and A question and to engage also with you, the speakers, but also with the online participants. Thank you very much. Congratulations. And look forward to continue the work. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you so much, Kristoff. I hope everyone can hear me. My name is Omar Siddiq and I work at the United Nations Economic and Social Commission for Asia-Pacific. We are a regional intergovernmental organization and I am speaking to you virtually from our headquarters in Bangkok, Thailand. And it's really been a pleasure to partner with you and Habitat, Think City and Urban ICE in helping to host this session. And we have a long partnership with Urban ICE in particular and the government of Malaysia, really in trying to put issues around sustainable, livable, inclusive cities at the center of the SDG agenda in Malaysia. And honestly, Malaysia has been quite a role model for all of us in helping to drive regional cooperation around this issue. Yeah. So, you know, I wanted to also bring up the point about how we can incorporate more public health measures and react to heightened economic insecurity for low-income groups. We heard a lot about, you know, the need to build back better and integrate different aspects of sustainability. So what does that actually mean in designing the human settlements of the future so that they can be livable? But also address these issues around public health that are really at the forefront of households and communities going forward. So maybe I'd like to ask the panelists to get the discussion going. Mayor Naraini, how do you think we can incorporate more of these public health measures so that we can build forward? You know, so that we can be ready for future public health risks without having to go back into economic insecurity and regression in our urban environments and economies? Sharing perhaps some of the lessons learned from your city in balancing the different needs of the socioeconomic recovery to COVID nineteen in Subang Jaya. And after this, I will come to my colleague Amaya from Urban ICE and to ask for questions from the auditorium. So Mayor Naraini, over to you. Thank you very much. Continue.
Yeah, I, I'm back on. In Subang Jaya, the locals' houses are affected. They having to take two hours. We they can follow in the day or in society producing delicacies that we can or in, in being online platforms and to live the market. This they want family to livelihood. This improving the we touch the informal sector, how strengthen the people involved in the sector, trying to make them try make it easier. Actually, if we are into a public health, maybe the Malaysian perspective is different than the rest of Asia. In that, our public health I, I have better standard from many, many years in that we take care of early healthcare for mothers and children since from the very beginning of their the, the so, and, and it continued throughout the children's two years and, but we found out lately during the COVID that families resorted to feeding their children less nutritious food during the times. This, this is a new challenge for us, either because they, they do not have the means providing the good food or they are ignorant of what of nutritious food and resorting to something easy like instant noodle. First and foremost, improve the livelihood and by, by improving the informal sector of which this locals' people are mostly in. So maybe education, what and making it available, for example, to one program of urban farming. We have taught people in houses how to plant something that is spinach bread that can be eaten easily in your corridor along that this people can back to you, Omar.
Excellent. I mean, that's really inspirational and pathbreaking, Mayor Naraini, what you are doing in Subang Jaya. You know, co-producing these solutions with communities and looking at a, a lifecycle approach, I think, you know, from, from infants and, and newborns and all the way to the elderly is really critical to looking at how we can integrate these public health concerns into the built environment. Dr. Ismail, you know, we are talking a lot about healthy environments and sustainability. You spoke a lot about issues around affordability and financing and things. What would you say is one of the future emerging challenges that you see in integrating this concept of livability beyond those issues that you already mentioned? That Malaysian cities would have to keep in mind when charting a future in the post-COVID nineteen world. Dr. Ismail?
Thank you, Omar. Very, very interesting question. Thank you. One of the issues about policymaking in any country is that we tend to want to consolidate a certain type of city, sorry. And, and therefore, sometimes when all our resources goes to just one or two cities, of course, resources or houses becomes very expensive in those cities and therefore there, there is a very upward trend to housing affordability. You can't afford it because everybody concentrates there. I think one of the issues I think we have to, to look into post-COVID, well, in KRI, we believe that this is not the first or the last pandemic. I mean, we really have to look into this in a very long-term manner. We must ensure that we don't destroy, you know, green economy is very important. We must ensure that all our shelter are of a certain decent standard. So we keep up now, now. We are very much into ensuring that most or all buildings adhere to safety, health and building standards. And therefore, Omar, this will be the new growth pole for all cities in our country because it's very localized, all these types of construction and maintenance. As well as we need really good professionals to advise, how do we retrofit? Say tropical design, let's not use too much air conditioning like now, sorry. As far as ensuring that we, we make sure that all resources are not consolidated in, in very dense cities. I know this is going against that the current wave whereby we believe that compact cities to be forward, et cetera. But I think as economies around the world are trying to think over the box, how to make new things happen. I think cities too need to think out of the box and I think regional development, making sure that all cities are competitive in, in a way that they can actually create good jobs in small cities or town and urban centers, that would free up certain resources. It will have other, other repercussions as well, but I believe personally, this is the way forward and that maintenance as well as good design will be the new growth poles to make cities more safe, healthy and, and more resilient to pandemics also to climate change. Thank you, Omar.
Excellent, Dr. Ismail. Let me just turn now to Mr. Mukhtar from Kuala Lumpur City. You know, hearing from what Dr. Ismail said, Kuala Lumpur is part of a system of cities, you know, connecting towns and human settlements economically, logistically, you know, through population flows, through many different settlements around the Clang Valley and beyond. What does the Kuala Lumpur of the future look like by twenty thirty or by twenty fifty? That addresses sustainability in its housing outcomes. Mr. Mukhtar, over to you.
Thank you, Omar. A very interesting question again. We just, in the midst of finalizing our, our structure plan. The structure plan is meant for year twenty forty. One of the major findings that shows has indicated that Kuala Lumpur is facing an outmigration for the past ten years. That could be due to the, our inability to provide enough housing. That could be one of the reason. That our neighbors, Taleng Jaya, Subang Jaya, all the other parts of Selangor attracted Kuala Lumpur people to migrate to, to Selangor. Because we are, we are in the same region. It's just like a balloon. You pinch it here, it will go the other way. So by the next twenty years, we have forecasted that we have a very minimum growth, less than one percent per annum, which is below the national growth. Technically, what it means that the Department of Statistics agree that the next twenty years, the outmigration will continue. So on, on my selfish thought, that we were blessing for Kuala Lumpur because we don't have to provide more numbers of housing in, 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 in one sense. But I think that commensurate with the number of land area available to us. As I related just now, we only have about thirteen percent land area left and most of that areas are the hilly parts of Sungai Penchala, which is very difficult to develop. So that's mean, in the coming years, it will be redevelopment, I say it again, redevelopment of our, our areas and that will incent commensurate with the expected population growth of Kuala Lumpur in the, the next twenty years. Back to you, Omar.
Thank you, Mr. Mukhtar, for that kind of visionary approach because I think we're ending the close of this session before handing over to, to Think City and Mr. Majid perhaps to give his perspectives on where to next. Amalia from Urban ICE, I wanted to check if there are any burning questions from the floor in the auditorium, in the convention center for any of our esteemed panelists.
All right, audience on the floor, is there any questions that you want to ask to any of the panelists? Anyone? Okay, we have one.
Hello, thank you. I just, one question from me actually, because we are talking about, we are talking about housing for all and also talking about quality housing. As we all know, the, I'm relating, I'm going to relate to the intensity of the public, the housing that, that have been approved by the authority. We know that WHO have already said that the intensity of maximum four hundred percent per acre to, to get that quality living. Because we are, we are aiming for community living and then WHO has already stated that four hundred or three hundred fifty percent per acre should give us a quality of life for people. So but the panelists were talking about approving one thousand percent per acre for public housing, which is very, very high and then I don't think we can get that quality living that we are aiming for, for the city. That's all. Maybe, maybe a comment from the panelists.
Omar, I will, I will probably briefly comment on Ponik Mastura's observation. I think I conquer with her in a sense that, you know, there are already established guidelines in terms of density and that's something maybe that, that in Malaysia we may need to reflect. Because if, at the moment, a lot of housing planning is being done within the boundaries of individual city regions. If you take Clang Valley, there is about eleven municipalities. What may be needed as a solution in the case of Kuala Lumpur or, or Clang Valley more importantly, is to think one in terms of polycentric approach whereby what do you call Clang? KL should not be thinking about KL alone, but more from polycentric, from a polycentric approach where your liver plate can be more integrated and more connected through effective public transportation networks. And in fact, a lot of public transportation is being introduced into Kuala Lumpur. So that's definitely one observation that we'd like to hope that the future would be such that what do you call, planning is done, housing planning is done more across jurisdictions of the local governments and not constrained by the local government. Second, I think the point that Ponik Mastura mentioned, density is needed to achieve agglomeration, but eventually diminishing marginal returns would be something that we will have to deal with. And that diminishing marginal returns means that you're going to compromise both quality of life and probably in the longer term, upward, social upward mobility. Third, I think importantly is that we continue to emphasize the fact that let's also not lose sight of the fact about that the need to build communities and to build livable cities. Eventually, the housing is just building block in the larger picture of building sustainable, livable cities. So if we lose sight of that, then, you know, we are going to end up with a larger challenge of not only vertical slums, but you know, unequal, unequal development and probably also negative consequence that we already are observing in the current pattern of development, both in Malaysia and in around the region where we can see that the challenge of or the lessons that we should be learning from the, what I would call the first five decades of or the lessons that we should be learning from the, what I would call, the first five decades of public housing in Southeast Asia, and there's much to reflect upon. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Majid, for, you know, for really stressing that the social function of land, the social function of housing as really bringing together the communities in that aspect of, you know, Malaysian's human settlements beyond, of course, territories, but across a system of cities, I think is a point very well taken. We are over time now, so I'm going to ask all of the panelists before closing the session. If you could give a 10-second key message to everyone listening, both in the auditorium as well as online, what do you want them to think about after they have left this physical or virtual room from all of the inputs today? Could you give us a 10-second key message? And maybe I'll start with Dr. Ismail and then Mr. Mukhtar, Mayor Naraini, and then I will give the final word to Think City, Mr. Majid. So, Dr. Ismail, what's your key message for this session that you want the participants to resonate with after they leave today?
Thank you, Omar. Affordable housing is not just about the price, but also the quality of housing and the quality of living condition. Important for us to put forward and like the audience and and everybody else to to look at it that way. Thank you.
Excellent. Mr. Mukhtar, over to you.
I concur with Dr. Suraya. I will go for quality community living. As simple as that. Thank you.
Succinct, but exactly to the point. Wonderful. Mayor Naraini, over to you.
I don't think
I think we'll come back to her if we can. So, Mr. Majid, your 10-second key message for everyone from this session?
Probably as I would, I would just, I will probably reiterate the topic, housing for all towards inclusive urbanization and meaning that it requires co-creation and not only to be shaped and dictated by the city government and developers, but rather it needs to be one that is more inclusive in terms of approach, both from the what do you call, design, build and implementation and a maintenance. Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you, everyone, for your rich discussions. We are over time now. But as a next step, UN Habitat, with support from ESCAP, will be taking forward a lot of these lessons learned in the implementation of the Development Account Project that Kristoff Kristoff mentioned. As well as we will have our ASEAN Urban Forum next year. Malaysia will be submitting its second voluntary national review on the progress on the 2030 agenda. And we want to have all of these issues around livable communities, housing and inclusive settlements really at the center of that. So I would really just like to thank you for your time. And we look forward to engaging with you throughout the rest of this forum. So Kristoff, I think, over to you. But we're really impressed by everyone's inputs and I feel inspired now to take forward now the outcomes of this session. Thank you.
No, thank you very much, Omar. I have nothing much to add. Only like to thank all the participants, to the distinguished panelists. It was like really a pleasure to see you again or to meet you on behalf of UN Habitat. We are like very thankful for your contribution. And also we look forward to work together. I think that we are very much aligned, that we have to learn from each other. And we are very lucky to have this project with ESCAP in Malaysia. And I want to really seize the opportunity of this activity to work more closer together and to share so that we can advance the housing rights agenda. So thank you, thank you very, very much on behalf of UN Habitat and congratulations. Bye-bye.
Right. Thank you very much, Mr. Kristoff, Mr. Azizi, Mr. Omar and Madame Naraini and Madam Suraya. For, thank you for the insightful sharing on housing for all towards inclusive urbanization. Thank you very much.